That's the longest minute.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Yeah.
(laughing).
Hi, call us September the 14th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We please have the roll call.
Commissioner Jacks.
Here.
Commissioner Barlow.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Hassett.
Commissioner Meele.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Padillo.
Padillo.
Padillo, I'm sorry. Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morse and Chairperson Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I would like to introduce our new member of our commission who is taking retired Commissioner Abbott's place, and it is Commissioner Patillo.
I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you.
We didn't know what she had.
And at this time Supervisor Jean Bishop, is she here? Yeah. And Director Tim Walsh are going to present a plaque.
Good morning Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to just express my extreme appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Bill Abbott, our retiring commissioner. He served Mojave County for many, many, many years for several different supervisors, including myself. So at this time, I would like to let Director Tim Walsh say a few words and then would like to call Commissioner, retired Commissioner Abbott up to the podium and present him with a going away thank you.
It is the end of an era. Commissioner Abbott has been a, just an amazing commissioner to have on this commission, always reliable and here, always bringing thoughtfulness and common sense to the commission and sharing insight, and it's just been a pleasure to have him on this commission. I can't thank him enough. He's a great man, always brings a perspective to the decisions. He's always doing his homework and looks at all the things ahead of time, but the perspective and the common sense and just the relatability that he brings. He puts himself in the shoes of each applicant and he puts himself in the shoes of each person speaking on the item, all the neighbors and that, and just really has put in, as was mentioned, you know, so much time and effort into this commission. We just really want to thank him and show more appreciation. We've got a few different things to hand out, but if we could get Commissioner Abbott to come on up. He threatened me before. He said, "I don't want a big to do," so I'm not listening to him now.
So Commissioner Abbott, this plaque says, "In appreciation of your service to Mojave County Planning and Zoning Commissioner, 2006 to 2022." It's from Supervisor Jean Bishop and Director Tim Walsh. And at this time, I'd like to present this to you and maybe we could get a photo opportunity with you. So could we get another picture in front of the Commissioners? Do you mind?
Sure. You know, I'm here for one reason. Respect for Tim, all of you people, because I resigned last month.
That's what you're, over there.
Get his best side.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to thank you as well, Mr. Abbott.
If I may, just a couple more parting gifts. We've got his name tag that he sat behind for how many years? 16 years?
Something like that.
Appreciate it. There's, so you can get that, put that up on the wall, and then we've also got, just I guess in, in the thought of the guidance and direction that you always provided the commission and all the insight, put together a little compass here from planning and zoning. And if you ever get lost, we're gonna, we're gonna blame Laura as being the stalker, but she's got coordinates to your home right here, so. But just a nice little compass there to always represent all the guidance and direction that you gave the council. But thank you very much.
I can use that because my wife uses those. We're leaving soon after I get home for scouting for elk up in Unit 9.
Very good.[427.12][427.12](laughing). Thank you very much, sir. Right through there. Set it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.[441.03][441.03](applause).
And Mr. Hawley, I understand that you have someone that you would like to introduce as well?
Madam Chair, yes, that is correct. We do have a few new planners with us. First, we'd like to introduce Nicole Russell. She's our planner two, will be presenting some items today. Peggy Clements, if you can stand in the back. Peggy, she's also been promoted to planner one. She was our planning technician and now will be one of our planners. And then Amy Pats, if she can stand. She is also a new planner that we have here at the county. She'll be presenting some items next month as well, so thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
The Chairperson, I would also like to introduce Sarah Colom. Sarah, you get to stand too. She is new also and will be working with you as a commission as well.
Ah, thank you.
And she's awesome.
Thank you, and welcome. Now we'll have an automated announcement.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exists petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff members, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand it to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please seat the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on the library during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking to one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2022, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location with the exception of any continued items. Approval of the August 10th, 2022 planning minutes will be reviewed at October 12th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item number one, Brolin.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 22514019 from an AR-5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to a CMO-5A commercial manufacturing open lot storage five-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for an open lot storage facility in the Fort Mojave vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
I will now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant here and wish to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Does any Commissioner have any questions on item number one?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Item one, I'm interested in what type of fencing they are going to use around this project.
Alexander, do you know the answer to that?
Madam Chair, Gillette, Commissioner Meele, per Development Services standards, we require a view obscuring fence, and oftentimes that can be chain-linked with slats or other materials that the applicant suggests.
Does that answer your question?
If that's all they got, it's all they got.
Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Again, we have a request to rezone, and it's actually giving them permission to perform manufacturing in an agricultural residential area, and I think if we even consider to their rezone, we should put a stipulation that it is only for storage and no manufacturing.
I think we can do that, can we not?
I mean, I personally don't, I'm not for the rezone in this area.
That's something, Commissioner Chairman Gillette and Commissioners, that is something that can be included in the motion if that's what is requested.
So, but you're not for this, are you?
No.
Well, I need a motion, and I don't care which way it is.
I make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second? The motion fails for the lack of a second, so I need another motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
With?
Second.
We need to put the fencing thing in it.
No, I wanted a stipulation to keep it to.
Yes, a stipulation.
To storage and not manufacturing.
Want to put that in?
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve with the stipulation, with the recommendations from the, from the staff, but also to limit this property, no manufacturing.
Chairman Gillette and Commissioners, the motion as it stands now is a motion to approve with staff recommendations and does not include any further stipulations. If the Commissioner making the motion wishes to amend the motion to include that additional stipulation, that can be done, but it has to be done before a vote. Mistake.
Okay, because we don't have a second on this.
I seconded it.
Oh, you did, okay. All right. So do you want to add that to it or not?
I would like to leave the motion as per staff recommendation.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jacks and seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay, so we have.
Two opposed.
Two opposed, but it does pass. Move on to item number two, and Matthew Gunderson.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for an approval of a preliminary plat for Viadulcee Track 4241, being a proposed subdivision of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 228, 02, 100, 101, and 102 in the Fort Mojave vicinity. This preliminary plat includes approximately 89.47 acres and is being proposed to be subdivided into 496 lots. The site is currently zoned R2 medium density residential with a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. The project is proposed to be completed in six phases. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant here and does he wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does any Commissioner have any questions? I do. You say we're, they're wanting to split this into 42 lots, or is it already in 42 lots?
Chairman Gillette, it's currently three parcels. They're looking to eventually split it into 496 lots.
Have they gone through the subdivision?
So this is for the preliminary plat, so this is part of the subdivision process. So the first step is getting the preliminary plat, which serves as kind of a general overview of the subdivision, and then with each phase that they propose, they need to do a final plat. So that's when we look at improvement plans and all of that, and then, so each phase of the project will need to have a final plat that will need to be approved by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you very much. Does any Commissioner have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
I actually have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Patillo.
So you mentioned this was R2 zoning, which is 4,000 square foot minimum lot size. How many of the lots actually are that small?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, I don't have, let me see if I can find that in here. Most of them are. So there's kind of three sections of it with, so one, the general proposal is that one would be age restricted and one would not be at the beginning, and then the third kind of subsection of it would depend on the final sales data from selling them. But the majority of the lots are right around that 4,000 square foot size.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Meele?
For staff, roads in that area basically are dirt. Are they a part of, of the counties that give maintenance? And with that many lots, is there any chance it's ever going to go over to asphalt roads?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Meele, so the land division regulations require that the roads within the subdivision be paved and also the roads leading to the subdivision. They need to provide paved roads to the subdivision as well.
Does that include curbs and gutters?
Yes.
Where are you going to get your water from?
That is a good question. Let me see if I can pull that up for you. They are required to provide will-serv letters from water companies and will need letters from the utility providers as well stating that all the improvements have been made to provide that service before the final plat can be approved. But let me see if I can see who the provider will be. Oh, Epcor would be the water provider.
Yeah, what about sewer?
I believe that would be Epcor as well. The tribal, sorry, I apologize. Commissioner Meele, it would be the Fort Mojave Tribal Utility. Thank you.
I will now call for a motion.
One more question.
Commissioner Martin?
Do we know if the developer is gearing towards three two-bedroom homes, or are these geared towards tiny homes?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Martin, I am not aware of the size of the homes that are being proposed here. We don't have, at this point, they could, as long as it meets the setback requirements, any size home would be allowed on the lots.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Meele?
Is this for, okay. Lot's going to be 4,000, a lot's going to be around 4,000 square feet. That's 10 by 40, or a combination thereof. Is it, the way it's zoned, is it for the stick-built or manufactured, or both?
Both would be allowed in that zone.
Thank you.
Call for a motion.
I forgot what the agenda item was.
I'll make a motion to deny due to the lack of information.
Aye, sir, go ahead.
I have a motion to deny made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Meele. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we have a count?
So you have two noes and then you would have six, or six, or no, you have two ayes with six noes, so the motion does not pass.
Okay, so I will call again for a motion.
Motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jacks. I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Jacks, to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
So, okay, it passes. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Real quick, if I may address Commissioner Martin, you mentioned that there was a lack of information. Is there specific information that you were looking for that wasn't presented in their staff?
Well, I think the developer should have been here to give us information on what his intent were. Are these going to be all single wide mobile homes, like, like what is he, is he geared to family housing or tiny homes?
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything on staff's.
Not on staff's part, no.
Okay, thank you.
And I do believe that that will be addressed as it goes through the process, correct?
Madam Chair, so when, this property was actually rezoned quite some time ago, and I believe at that time they were presenting some type of manufactured home type structures, and it did make it through the rezone process through the commission and then the board. There is no stipulation that they have to do manufactured homes or they have to do site-built homes. The zoning, we presented the zoning at 4,000 square foot minimum so that they could do this, I think it's more of like a senior type facility, 55 and older type facility, was what was presented several months ago when we did the rezone, but that's not something that they have to stick to. We went to that R2 zone, is it R2? Yeah, the R2 zone, so that they can have that smaller lot size. Now they're going through the process of doing the subdivision, which is the subdivision preliminary plat, making sure all the infrastructure is there, but we don't dictate what kind of homes they have to put on there. That's not something that we get involved with.
Commissioner Meele?
I have a question. Assuming these lots are going to be 10 by 40, or 4,000 square feet, what's the side setback?
Only 400 square feet.
It's only 400.
So, in, Madam Chair, in your packets, there is a subdivision plan. I can pull it up actually on our screen if you would like. This, this shows the layout of the subdivision, what is being proposed. The lots are, they're bigger than the 40 by 10. 40 by 10 is the 400, that'd be 400 square feet. But it's typical of what you'd see, I believe when this was coming before the commission and the board, there was mention of a manufactured home park that was nearby, and so they were doing similar sized lots to that manufactured home park, but they wanted to do more of an upscale type manufactured home, but we're not, we're not saying that you have to do manufactured homes, they could do site-built homes as well. But the, I believe the, this parcel plat or the preliminary plat has been included in your, your packets for review as well.
Thank you. We will move on to item number three, Nicole Russell.
Item number three is the evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 306-66-110 from an AR-15A agricultural residential 15-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-9A agricultural residential nine-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and ask if any Commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
A motion to approve item three with staff recommendation.
Second.
Who seconded it? Martin? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is passed, approved. Item number four, staff report by Alexander Brolin.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 306-51012A from an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-3A agricultural residential three-acre minimum lot size zone to allow. residential 3-acre minimum lot-size, to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. The applicant is seeking to create five parcels. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Is the applicant present? I have a question. Five, doesn't that trigger the subdivision?
Chairman Gillette, minor land division is allowed up to five parcels.
Up to?
Yes. Six or more parcels would trigger the subdivision.
Thank you. Does any commissioner, no, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to ask any questions or make a comment? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve according to staff recommendations.
Second.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number five, Alexander Rowland.
Item five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 306-07213B, from a C2H1A highway commercial 1-acre minimum lot-size to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to allow for an outdoor storage facility in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak? Are there any others wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have a question? Commissioner Miel.
For staff, what type of fencing?
Chairman, Madam Chair Gillette, Commissioner Miel, the open lot storage requires a view obscuring fence, which would be either the chain-link fence with slats or other materials permitted by development standards.
Anyone else have a question? Hearing none, I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that this is for storage and no manufacturing.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Commissioner Miel. I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Miel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I believe that this passed.
The, Commissioner Kelly, you opposed it, is, did anyone else? Just to clarify.
I did.
Okay, thank you. It did pass.
I actually, I was unclear as to what we were voting on, so I would oppose this motion.
Okay, it's, the motion still passes.
Okay. We'll move on to item number six.
Item number six is the evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel numbers formerly known as 329-05-037 and 036A, formerly known as 329-05-034 through 036, from an R1-1A single-family residential 1-acre minimum lot-size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone, to allow for horses to be kept on the property in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Please come to the podium. Give us your name and your address.
My name's Lyle Schaefer. Well, never done this before. 21450 North Silver Eagle is where I live, in White Hills, Arizona. And I do not approve of what this guy wants to do. I have talked to him when he first moved in. He has other agendas and horses. From what he told me, he wants to put cardboard houses basically on there and sell his property.
What does he want to put on it?
He wants to put bungalows. He's trying to get around codes of electric, to get his electricity, is what he told me. He told me there's ways around it. It's all about who you know, is what this man says. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. And the horses aren't, it's not about horses. It's about rezoning so he doesn't have to go through the hassle of the way we're zoned as a residential neighborhood. He doesn't have to build a house to get electricity. He can live in a camper.
And this man told you that himself?
Yes. His name's Joe, Joe and Barbara.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other people wanting to speak on this subject? Your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Wayne Glasgow. My address is 8419 Las Cruces. I'm just across the street from him. And I oppose this rezoning. He's saying that he's trying to bring livestock in. That is not the case. He has told me the same thing that he just told that guy. He's just going to build a bunch of shacks out there and flip the property. He's devaluing our property, and he is currently living out there since January in a motorhome. He has no intentions of bringing livestock or anything else out there. He has no water, no power, or anything else. He's got pallet shacks he's built out there. He's done several other things out there that is not according to zoning, current zoning regulations. And I've checked with the zoning department, and they've told me point-blank that he cannot live in the shack or the motorhome without a building permit, and he hasn't applied for any building permits. So this rezoning is going to be a total disaster as far as I'm concerned. We don't need more RVs, more sheds. We need homes built. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
William Allgood, that's 21473 Red Mountain Drive. And I don't approve of this zoning change. There's stick-built homes out there. There, there is a five-parcel area, just probably quarter-mile away, that was changed to allow the same thing he wants, but all that's out there now is trailers, shacks. In this particular area where he's living at, there's no water source. There is no facilities at all for horses or animals or anything else like that. And I'm another third person that this gentleman has talked to, that that's what he wants to do. Put a trailer out there, build a shack, and rent the areas out. So we're kind of against that. If he was to put a nice trailer and trees and stuff like that, we would have no problems at all. But it would just bring down the value of all the homes around there that are stick-built and manufactured homes and other stuff like that. So we disapprove of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Come to the podium and give your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Scott Kleimer. I'm a resident in White Hills. The parcels that I own is adjacent to the applicant, which is 32905002. My son owns the property next door, 001. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it. I'm here also to represent his interest by proxy. I'm concerned about the rezoning over to agricultural for a variety of reasons. There's a variety of health reasons. There's been numerous studies that have been done, that when you introduce agriculture into the middle of a residential area, between the dust, between invasive species, from manure to chemicals that go into the ground, it causes health problems. Even if you're doing everything correctly and using the land per the zoning, there's a lot of risks out there to the residents. All of us who have bought property there, I'm going to be building a home, my son's going to build a home, he's going to be raising his children there. There's numerous other people who are buying and they're going to be building. These are going to be their homes, even though if you look at it now, it looks like empty lots, but White Hills is growing and growing quickly. The other reason is we've all got to be good stewards of the environment, we've got to be good stewards of our neighbors, and if you have an applicant who is constantly flaunting the zoning laws and going against the restrictions and feeling that they can pretty much do whatever they want, what makes anyone think if it's a rezone that they're going to adhere to the laws that govern that zone? So I am strongly opposed to it. It's a residential area, it doesn't need to have the agriculture introduced for what I believe are dubious reasons.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
I would encourage you all to not pass this.
Thank you.
I have a question of the speaker. Is that permitted?
Yes, sir. It's a range.
Yeah, could you come back to the podium for a second, sir?
Sir, would you come back for a question?
No, that's, that's all right. So are you opposed to the fact that they want to put horses there, or are you opposed to the fact that they want to change it to agricultural zoning, which may or may not allow them additional uses beyond what is currently anticipated?
I'm opposed to the rezoning to agriculture and the chances of bringing what goes along with the rezoning of agriculture into a residential community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, just want to hopefully put some of your minds at rest. So when, when we get issues before us for rezoning or zoning, it doesn't matter which one it is, the staff has already vetted that issue, they've looked at everything, the surrounding area, how things will fit in, and then at the end, they have staff recommendations. And so when we, when we make different, what is it? I can't think of the damn word. When we...
Recommend?
Recommend, no, the staff recommends. When we put forth a motion, yes, thank you, escaped me somehow. Anyway, there are always recommendations that the staff has, and the second one here says, "The appropriate permits and licenses will be obtained prior to construction." So regardless of what another citizen tells you, I don't care what, what you think is going to go on that land or not, it has to go through planning and zoning, it has to go through the building department, all permits and approvals have to be completed before anything can happen, so he can say whatever he wants to say, partly to rile you up maybe, but the truth is, it has to survive all the examinations of Mojave County and the planning, zoning, building department. So, you know, there's some comfort there.
Well, I, I feel that if this applicant is being deceptive, that that creates a problem.
We'll have him take a light-emitting test.
Do we have any other questions?
I have a comment.
Commissioner?
Yes, I, in relationship to the existing zoning, that particular section is an R1-1A. Throughout that particular section, there is another section adjacent to it that is AR-5. Wait, no, there is, I'm sorry, there is, there is a small portion that does have AR within that section.
Thank you. I have not closed the, the public hearing because we got kind of off with asking him questions. So would you like to say something? Please come to the podium. Name and address.
William Allgood, 21473 Red Mountain, White Hills. Listening to the gentleman here about the permits and other stuff, it's my understanding that you can park a motorhome or trailer on this without a permit, as long as you do a permitted septic tank. You can build a shed without a permit, as long as it reaches a certain measurement. So not everything is going to go through a permit for that property.
I believe anything in Mojave County before, it can be approved by the building department. If it exceeds $650, it's supposed to have a permit. Am I right, Scott? So if you build a shed for, if you can build a shed for less than $600, material and labor, give me your guy's number, because I've got a couple sheds I want built.
He's got them out there. One of your, your enforcement guys have not been out there in six months or six weeks that we've been complaining.
Well, now, we're getting off course, because you're talking about enforcement, and right here, we're talking about zoning.
I understand that.
See, I don't think you do, because we can't talk about enforcement here, because that's not what we're commissioned to do.
The other zone that she was talking about, the one that's just next to that.
The AR.
Yeah, that was changed to that, this particular one. There's no permits, and there's a lot of trailers out there. There's a lot of shabby motorhomes out there that are not permitted. And long, as long as you have a septic tank that's permitted, you can put a trailer or a shack out there and hook up to your septic.
Right, well, there are a lot...
It's not permitted.
There are a lot of properties in Mojave County that have been, the term grandfathered, for whatever reason, just to move things along, but that's not happening today. That's why we have this board here, and that's why they vet these things, and they put little staff recommendations in there that are, that are meant to, to stop people from doing what you're talking about. You see what I mean? So as I said, prior to construction, they have to meet all the requirements here. That's prior to construction. So if he thinks he's going to go out there and put several things in without, you know, one of the things that, that residents can do is if you know somebody's building something illegally, call the building department, have the building inspector come out and red-tag it, and that ends everything right there.
We have done that, and it's, they haven't been out there in six weeks.
Well, see, I'm on the zoning commission. I don't know when enforcement takes place.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Might I could address a few items?
Please.
First and foremost, for an electric permit on-site, you have to have an approved use. So currently with the R1 zone, an approved use would be a single-family residence, and they could get their electric permit. By changing to an AR zone, which is our agricultural residential zone, we do allow for temporary residence in an RV, which would require a septic system, but also requires a permit with the county. It's an annual permit that they can get, and then we would also allow for that electric permit to the site. I believe this gentleman already has his RV on-site, and we received the complaint from the surrounding neighborhood. With the rezone, it's been pending, because if they get the rezone, then they can come in and get a permit for their RV as well. In his application, he indicated that he would like to have horses, and that's why he is applying, and that's why, that's what we put on our staff recommendation. But I believe he is also looking to live on the site with his RV, and if this is approved, he can come in and get a permit. It would be an annual permit to live temporarily, temporary in his RV. The other thing that I'd like to address is the accessory structure. The other thing that I'd like to address is the accessory structure. In an R1 zone, an accessory structure is not allowed without a primary residence first. If the zone is changed to AR, you can't have an accessory structure, like a garage or a shed, prior to having a primary residence. The stipulation is 300 square feet. If the accessory structure is less than 300 square feet, it does not require a permit from the county. If it is above 300 square feet, then it does require a permit. Or if it has any electric or power going to that accessory structure, it would require a permit. Staff has recommended approval. There have been rezones in this vicinity in the past to AR. Like Commissioner Alexander said, just down the street, we approved that same rezone. And kitty corner adjacent to these parcels is also agricultural residential, also to the south. So staff looked at the area. We saw that it wouldn't necessarily be called spot zoning, because we have AR in the vicinity, but it is up to the commission to decide, is this good for this area? And you can decide, you don't have to just go off of our recommendation. You can go make your own decision on whether or not this is good for that area yourselves.
Thank you. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did I have one more person who wanted to speak? Please come to the podium. Name and address.
Yeah, I was from Glasgow. I live at 8419 West Las Cruces. Again, kind of rehashing this whole thing, but this guy has been living there since January in his motorhome without permits. He's already avoided and skirted this whole subject. That's all he's up to, plain and simple. And now he's figured out how he can stay living in this motorhome by getting this rezoned. And I put a lot of money into my property. I do not want to live in an RV park surrounding me. There's not going to be any horses there. I guarantee you, there will be no livestock. He is not going to do that. He is going to use this rezoning so that he can live permanently in his motorhome. And he is currently living in a Home Depot shed. He's got AC in it, he's got satellite hooked up to it. He is not abiding by the rules and regulations. Thank you.
Then you need to follow procedures and make your complaints?
We did. Nothing's happened, though.
No, no, no. Order.
I know. They say it takes time, but...
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
If he gets this zoning through, we're done.
I appreciate it.
Chairman Gillett and Commissioners, I'm going to ask that we have order here in the auditorium, and if we can't have order, those who will not remain in order will have to be asked to remove themselves.
Correct. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does any Commissioner have anything else to say?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for staff.
Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you. You've pretty much answered most of my questions, I think, but I'm just going to go down the list anyway that I kind of scribbled down. So my understanding is he currently lives there. Will this grant him any sort of agricultural exemptions from building permits, et cetera, by nature of the fact that we're changing it to agricultural zoning?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Patillo, no. In order to get an agricultural exemption, there's a state statute that, I think it's ARS 81112, that requires that you have to have a certain amount of land, along with the... In our zoning ordinance, we made it so that in order to be considered agricultural for this exemption, you have to meet the Department of Revenue's standards for an agricultural use. For example, you would have to have at least 40 head of cattle. You have to be in operation out of three, out of five years, and it has to be for profit. If it's crops, you have to have 10 acres of seasonal crops, 20 acres of permanent crops. It's difficult to get an agricultural exemption with our current regulations according to our zoning ordinance.
And finally, I think you answered this. If we change the zoning, he could apply for an RV permit to live there. And is that something that you're obliged to renew year after year after year?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Patillo, absolutely, yeah. If he has the AR zone, he could apply for that RV permit, and we would renew it however often he does come in to apply for it, as long as he meets our standards. We do require that there is a septic system on site. We also require that the RV remain roadworthy, a couple other requirements.
Thank you. I have a question. Apparently, one of the concerns seems to be that he's going to park a lot of trailers, mobile homes, whatever, on this property. The change in zoning is not going to allow that. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Thank you. I will now call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to deny by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. The motion is denied. Or the applicant, application is denied. We will now move on to item number seven, and that's Matthew Gunderson.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit of Assessor's Parcel Number 31749108, to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of BOS Resolution Number 2021-048, allowing for a billboard in the White Hills vicinity. The applicant has cited trying to meet the Arizona Department of Transportation's requirements for a permit, as why they haven't been able to complete their billboard as of today. Staff recommends approval with all the conditions of the original resolution, BOS Resolution Number 2021-070, and that the extension of time will be in effect until June 7, 2023.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public meeting, but prior to doing that, I do want to tell you that if you are opposing a motion or an item that we have, it is going to go before the Board of Supervisors, and you need to be present there as well. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak?
Yes. Is there anyone else to speak?
You get to be first.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks, and I just wanted to explain some of the reasoning, because there are four requests for extension of time for the billboards. So the county normally gives you one year to construct your billboard, or you have to come back for an extension. I wish that that were longer. Some of the things that play into this, why we have to come back for extensions, is once we get the approval from the county, then we have to go to ADOT. And ADOT requires, on the same side, within 1,000 feet, you have to have a commercial operating business. The parcel, I'm working on a modular that's right across from White Hills, that's literally taken a year to get going, because all of the state plans for that building had to go through twice. It's been a disaster, quite frankly. We're supposed to have a final building permit inspection. You know, it's supposed to be this week. I think it will be open and running, but you can't file for ADOT permit until you have that business going. So this one has drugged down this building permit, and the one to the north as well, another one that you'll be seeing. So the timing on those, they just take a while. The billboard has actually been waiting to be constructed, so there's four in a row. The next four items are extensions, and two of them are tied into this modular. I just wanted to let you know what that was, what that reasoning is. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do any Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation for item number seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacks, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number eight, Matthew Gunderson.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit of Assessor's Parcel Number 31749101, to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of approval of BOS Resolution Number 2021-054, allowing for a billboard in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff has, or the applicant has cited issues with getting the Arizona Department of Transportation's permit as the reason for needing the extension of time. Staff recommends approval with the same conditions of the original BOS Resolution Number 2021-054, and that this extension of time will be in effect until June 7, 2023.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant present? Then I will close the public hearing. Does any Commissioner have any questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendations.
Second the motion.
Yes, Commissioner Alexander.
Call and name the motion. I seconded it.
Oh, you're seconding it, okay. Okay, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number nine, Alexandria, Alexandria? Alexandria? No. Brolin.
Item nine is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit of Assessor's Parcel Number 31749058, to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of BOS Resolution Number 2021-070, allowing for a billboard in the Dolan Springs vicinity. The applicant states meeting the Arizona Department of Transportation's requirements as the reason conditions have not yet been met. Staff recommends approval with the conditions from BOS Resolution 2021-070, and the new extension of time will be in effect until June 7, 2023.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. The Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendation. Second the motion.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We now have item number 10. Alexandra.
Item 10 is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit of Assessor's Parcel Number 31757014, to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of BOS Resolution Number 2019-110, to allow for a billboard in the Dolan Springs vicinity. The applicant states meeting Arizona Department of Transportation requirements as the reason conditions have not yet been met, and staff recommends approval with the conditions of BOS Resolution 2019-110, with a new expiration date of October 7, 2023.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Any Commissioners have any questions? I call for a motion.
I'll make to approve item 10 with staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexandra, Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Patillo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is the evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 314-17-011, from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a minor land division in the Truxton vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. Staff has also received two letters of opposition, one of which triggers the 20% of the property owners representing 20% of the land area within the 300 feet would require a fourth, fifth vote from the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. I do have two people who want to speak on this item. Larry Moore, would you come to the podium, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Council. My name's Larry Moore. My address is 15141 East Mountain Inn Drive. And I proposed this little rezone without knowing what I got into, but it's just a simple rezone for my wife's sister. She just wanted a piece of land in Arizona here, and she presently lives in California. And I'm not even sure she'll ever move here. She just wanted a place to pull her trailer over once a month, or I mean, once a year for a month or so, and just park on the land. I told her she could park there anyway, but she wanted to buy some land here, so that's what that's about. And I did read the letters that were sent, and I don't know Christina Leap, I don't know what she has to do with anything, but she's the only one out there that her family did subdivide their land. And the other one was from Kenny Finch, and a lot of stuff in his letter is just flat not true. And I talked to all of the people, my neighbors, except him, because he sent the letter. I talked to Holly Overston, I talked to Joe Douda, I talked to Ryan, and the tribe, of course, they never responded to nothing, so I didn't talk to them. But they were all, they said, you know, it's your land. If you would like to do that, you just go ahead and do that. Spoke to one of them last night, because I want to make sure, you know, I don't want to cause trouble. I want my neighbors to be happy. And so that is not true in his letter. He said they all agreed with him. That is not true. And anyway, I am, I just want you to consider that it's a simple little rezone for 10-acre parcel for my sister-in-law. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. I also have a request from Ken Finch.
My name is Ken Finch, 15135 East Mountain Inn Drive. I oppose this zoning split. I don't believe it'd fit in with the community. What we have there has only been five parcels that have lived on. We maintain our road. County does not maintain our road. Now, a lot of times what's said and what's done are two different things. So I believe this isn't really good for this community, because once a parcel is split, then the ownership, he has no say over that. That can be sold, resold, or whatever. Now, the reason we bought this land was to keep it open. There's very few 40s that are still open in this nice area. We're surrounded by BLM and the Wallopi Indian Reservation. Now, we bought out there to keep this land, to have that 36 acres. Now, if this is too much land to handle, then sell the whole thing as one parcel, and then go buy something smaller. So that's all I wanted to say. I oppose this, and I will be at the supervisor meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other persons wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any Commissioners have any questions?
I do, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Patillo.
Yeah. On the findings of facts, it states that similar zoning appears to be in the area... Sorry, my microphone was off. In the finding of facts in the agenda item, it says that... In the finding of facts in the agenda item, it says that, that similar zoning appears that is in the area. Could you be, describe that a little more? How far away is it? How similar is it?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, so you have the property directly to the west, which is owned by Mr. Finch, and then there's two properties west of that that are currently zoned AR 16A, so they have a smaller minimum lot size than that 36 acres, and they, but the same agricultural residential zone. So what they're rezoning to is the same zone, it's just changing the minimum lot size. So when staff looks at that, there are smaller lots in the area, and it still meets the rural development area standards of the Mojave County General Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I will call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve per staff recommendations for item number 11.
I have a motion made to approve by Commissioner Jacks, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number 12.
Commissioner Gillette, or, sorry, Chairman Gillette, I have a conflict of interest on item number 12, so I'll be stepping away and not voting.
You can be excused. Alexandra Brolin.
Item 12 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 32414960 from a C1 neighborhood commercial zone to a C2 general commercial zone to allow for a dog boarding facility in the Kingman vicinity. Staff has received five letters of opposition and the additional letter received at the meeting today. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing, and I have several people who would like to speak. Jordan Alter, please come to the podium.
This might make more sense after other people have had a chance to spoke, to speak. Would you rather I sit down and wait for them? Or do you want me to try and explain it, just?
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Sure, go right ahead.
Go ahead and sit down.
Yes, you can sit in and answer the questions. Jeanette Duran, please come to the podium. State your name and your address.
My name is Jeanette Duran, and I own the property adjacent to this little strip mall where these units are, 2790 Butler Avenue. I'm opposed to this because this facility is, well, it's, right now, it's like a pet salon, and it's a tiny little unit, and it's got no rear door, no rear access. There's, if you want to board dogs, you have to have some kind of yard, enclosed yard, dirt, grass, something. There's nothing there that would be conducive to having dogs. There's, it's all, there's concrete parking out front, and there's no rear access, which would be, you know, if there was an emergency, that could be a problem. I have a rental next door, and I think that it would be detrimental to me because I would have a hard time renting to decent tenants with dogs barking, you know, all hours. And there's just, you know, I mean, it's not a type of a unit that's conducive to have boarding dogs. It's a little tiny place, smaller, as small as a garage. It's just tiny, and if anybody's gone to look at it, it's tiny. There's no back door, there's no yard, anything for dogs. I'm just totally against it.
Thank you. I also have a, Kelly Copper, is that correct?
I'll pass.
Okay. You don't want to speak now? Okay, then I have one more. Bruce Reach, please come to the podium.
Thank you for time to come before this committee. My name is Bruce Beach. I live at 2745 East Butler Avenue, Kingman. I'm opposed to this rezoning for several reasons. I brought some notes. Besides this property being small and not having room for a dog run, this property has been in disorderly condition for a long time. The business has been there for two years, and during these two years, the business has not seen a need to clean this property. This weekend, I observed that the notice required by the committee for rezone were gone. They were blown over by the monsoon. I talked to the owner, or the business owner, about these issues, and she says it's not her responsibility. She did talk to me about her plans to put a dog run in, and this is going to be on the north side of the building. And this area is very small, and I believe it's a setback for access to the fire company in case of emergency. This area was also used as a small vehicle repair shop storage, where they stored several vehicles there, possibly spilling oil and gasoline on this ground where their dog run's going to be. This area is also close to pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Now, this causes a problem because cigarette smoke and cars emit benzene, which is toxic. It's 10 times more toxic than we've been led to believe. This is a big concern for us, and we should look at this, I'm sorry, my time is up. I appreciate your considering me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, which one of you want to go first? Okay.
My name is Jordan Brienne Alter. I go by Bree, just to clear up confusion. I'm the one who proposed this. I live at 3611 East Cardinal Lane, Kingman, Arizona. I'm aware of the letters of opposition, but would like to give the chance to address the points, to put these people's minds at ease, that everything they're worried about is something I've already addressed. To start, dog boarding is not the technical term, but the legal definition of my plans. What it actually will be is a small scale, four to six dogs, pet sitting, connected to my grooming salon. These services are aimed towards my grooming clients who wants their dog watched by someone they are familiar with. These animals will not be shoved into a kennel to bark and defecate. They will be played with, exercised, and enriched. When they are enriched, behaviors like barking and howling are generally extinguished. My pet hotel will be no different than your neighbor who has a county max of four dogs. Now, to address the letter of opposition, all of these complaints are based on incorrect assumptions, to bullet point them. One, I have had my grooming salon on Northern for one and a half years, and, or sorry, my current one for one and a half years and my old one for two years. In that time, I have never received a noise complaint. I can promise you, boarding will produce 1/4 the volume of a grooming salon. If my grooming salon doesn't bother you, then you won't even notice the pet hotel. Two, once the, so currently, the, I only own the grooming salon. I don't have the boarding salon next door. We've just been working on it with the permission of my landlord. But if approved, I will be putting up a yard with a shaded outdoor area for them, where they will be able to eliminate and stretch their legs, and then we're going to come back inside for their playtime and training. My immediate business neighbors support my plans. Residential neighbors are too far away to hear my grooming salon, and being close to the fire station makes me feel safer. In my salon, pets sleep through the blow dryer where they are waiting for their owner in the kennel. In reference to the constant walk-ins, the business end of the hotel will be handled from the grooming side of things. Dog area will be for employee and scheduled tours only. The dogs will not be disturbed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly?
My name is Kelly Cropper. I live at 705 Erickson Drive, Kingman, Arizona. And I approve, I support this. She has been my tenant for, on the commercial, for the two years that she was on Bank Street, and she's never had any complaints. She's a person that is above and beyond her word. To her, laws matter, and she really goes above and beyond. She is an excellent tenant, an excellent person. I love her character, and she is really hands-on with her business. She'd rather keep it small and be hands-on than have a lot of staff. She's, she's very impressive to me.
Let me ask you, what size is this lot?
The one that she's currently at? I don't know the dimensions. I've been there, it's.
Is it a normal-sized lot?
I think, well, it's in a strip mall. You'll have to ask Jordan Brienne. She goes by Bree, but I'd say her office is about the size of this for her grooming salon, and then probably the same size for the, for the suite, the last set of suites that she wants to be adjacent to.
Well, the reason I ask is because several people have said that this facility is way too small to be boarding or even daykeeping dogs.
I don't, I believe that it's, it's fine for four to six dogs, maybe, you know, but I believe that it's, her grooming salon is about this size, and then the space next to it is, I believe, the same size that she's been working on. So, I don't know the square footage. You would have to ask her.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. But she has done a lot of improvements to this building, and it looks beautiful. She's got pictures, so it's an upgrade.
Do I have anyone else who wants to speak on this subject? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Martin?
Alexandra.
Alexandra.
Yes, I have some questions for the applicant. Yes, ma'am, please. In this area, this outside area for the animals, that's 10 by 20, is that dirt, grass?
Currently, it's dirt, but if I get approved, I'm going to put more money into it. Still debating on my options, but I'm thinking AstroTurf.
AstroTurf?
Yes, it would put a barrier between the ground that we already cleaned and filtered through, got all the metal pieces out, but it'll have a barrier on top of it to make it even safer.
Okay, so you're, the shading would be a barrier on top?
Yeah, I'd be putting up a fence that you can't see through, and the shade would go over the top of that. So that way, I could take dogs out in the rain and extreme sun, and they can go do their business, and then they can come back inside.
And, and I'm not really clear, are you going to be occupying all of the building?
I currently, I'm in Suite B/C, which is a combined unit for my grooming salon, and then Suite D is what I will be looking at getting.
So there are like, what, four suites there?
Technically, five, but mine was condensed to two, so now there's legally four.
Okay, so that would just be a small portion of that building, that's.
Three quarters. Won't it be three quarters?
I'm sorry?
Won't it be three quarters of the building? If there's five units, you've already combined one, and you're going to take another one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Martin has a question.
So, if your intention is boarding, will you have someone on site at night?
I will be having cameras on there, and I live two miles away, and I will be checking on them throughout the night. For holidays such as 4th of July and New Year's, I did plan on bringing a sleeping cot in there, just because dogs don't tend to handle fireworks well, and having someone on standby would make those kind of holidays easier for them.
And right now, you have a pet grooming business in there, and you will continue with the pet grooming?
Yes. It's mostly just an extension of my pet grooming. My main audience is going to be my clients, who are going out of town, and they just want someone their dog knows to stay with, so their dogs are more comfortable than going to a brand-new person to, you know, be uprooted from their house.
And I have a question for staff. It's indicated that she would board four to six small animals. If we were to approve this, what guarantee would we have that she would remain to the four to six number, and also to the small qualification?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Alexander, the commission could add a condition to limit the number of animals that would be allowed on the site.
And the size of the animals also? I mean, they say small, but what is small? And what would that criteria mean, really?
Right, that would be up to the commission to, to determine that within their, within the condition they have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Got a question.
Oh.
For staff.
Oh, for staff, yes, please. Sorry.
So, is there any permits that are required in addition to what we're doing here today? Is there something from the animal control side, or is there some type, someone that looks at the condition of the facility and approves it?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Jacks, I'm not aware of any additional permits that are required from animal control to run that type of business. Certainly, animal control gets involved if there's any concerns over the welfare of the animals, and people, if there are complaints in that nature, animal control will go out and inspect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Commissioner Kelly has made a motion to approve. I need a second. Motion fails for lack of a second. I need a motion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin to deny, and a second by Commissioner Jacks. All in favor of denying this request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion is approved, and the applicant is denied. Item 13 is the monthly reports.
Yep, that will be sent out via email.
And now we move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws. We handled this at our last meeting, but we need a motion to revise the Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws next month.
Make a motion to revise the planning and zoning bylaws.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. There any commissioners' comments, announcements? Any staff announcements?
Yeah, I have.
You do? Okay.
I'm just wondering how we can help these people that are dealing with this, the ADOT taking over a year. Could we extend that? Is that, is that a possibility? How, how can we go about helping those applicants?
What could happen is, obviously, as the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors could extend the period for which these are required, or the period in which they're required to get their billboards in place and get the approvals of ADOT. However, from ADOT's side, we, like, like the applicants, are beholden to ADOT, so.
Thank you. Any other requests, announcements? I will now have the call to the public. Anyone wishing to speak, it'll be under two minutes. Seeing none, I am having no more business to come before this commission. This meeting is adjourned.